Good evening, I call this meeting to order of the York County School Board for October 28, 2019. Before we get started, Dr. Shandor and myself have a few remarks we'd like to make. So, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, Board members. Most of you are probably aware that on Saturday night, we lost three of our TAB High students in a tragic car accident. This news has left all of us with a heavy heart and deep sadness. I want to say I was so moved by the outpouring of love and support shown by our community and students at the vigil held in honor of these three students last night at TAB High School. This morning, we had additional staff and counselors available to provide students and staff members support at TAB High, TAB Middle, and TAB Elementary School. And across the division as needed. Mr. Rice, TAB High Principal, and Ms. Young, TAB Middle School Principal, and Ms. Lugo, TAB Elementary Principal, are making every effort to provide students and staff the emotional support needed during this difficult time of grieving and remembering the lives of these students. Additionally, we had several community members and organizations play a huge role this weekend and today. For that, I am so grateful to live in a community which shows so much compassion. Please continue to keep these families in your thoughts and prayers in the days ahead.
And I would like to also share that the entire board sends their condolences to the families. Saturday evening's tragic accident that claimed the lives of three in our community is such an unimaginable loss that a parent would have to deal with. No words can ease the pain of those involved. And I just ask you to, you lift them up in your thoughts and your prayers. And I'd like to take a few moments in silence and remembrance of those and their families, those that have been lost.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to move on. We're going to ask our pledge leader if he would step forward. That's Logan Furman. He's sitting on the front row here. If he'd step forward, while I'll share some information about him. And it turns out, I know Logan's grandfather real well, it turns out, yeah. So, TAB Elementary is proud to have Logan Furman lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Logan is a second grade student at TAB Elementary, and during his years at TAB, he's been recognized as an exemplary good citizen and role model. His teachers share that Logan is always helping others, and even when not asked. He is also the first one to offer his support and show concern when a classmate is sad or lonely. Logan can also be seen waving to friends, teachers, and his principals as he walks through the halls, making sure to share his cheerful personality. Logan is also a dedicated student and is a determined worker as well. Even when something is hard, he will work at it and keep practicing, not giving up until he succeeds. When not in school, Logan enjoys playing with his friends and being with his family. He also enjoys playing soccer, and really anything outside. Thank you, Logan, for showing us how Tigers wore. And please stand with us and join us in the pledge as Logan leads us.
Wait. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Logan. And as a reminder during the break, there'll be an opportunity to take pictures for all the award recipients. So, we're going to start with our Seniors of the Month, and it's Bruton High School, Ms. Haywood.
I do indeed have Bruton High School. Ms. Lauren Smith, if you will stand, parents, Mr. and Mrs. Jackie and Marie Smith. Everybody stand with you. Who else is with you? Everybody that's with you. Grandparents, everybody. Fantastic.
There you go.
Bruton High School is excited to recognize Lauren Smith as our October Senior of the Month. During all of Lauren's years at Bruton, we have observed her determination, generosity, and passion. Lauren is one of the most dedicated students in the class of 2020. Since the ninth grade, she has contributed her time and talents to show support for our school, and she represents Bruton well. She has earned highest academic honors all four years. Whenever Lauren sees a need, she asks how she can help and works diligently until the task is complete. Lauren generally desires to help others. She has volunteered for the Big Cat Race and volunteers for Here for the Girls, a breast cancer awareness event, and also volunteers at Head Start. Lauren has served as a Class Office Leader, HOSA Junior Representative and Secretary, FBLA Secretary, and Member of the Key Club and PALS Mentor Leader. Additionally, Lauren led our softball and field hockey teams by serving as the captain of these teams. She has received numerous awards, including All-Conference Softball, Ninth Grade, All-Region Second Team Softball, Tenth Grade, and All-Conference Second Team Field Hockey, Eleventh Grade. She also participates in cross-country and indoor track. Lauren is planning to attend college and desires to become a dermatologist. We are very proud of Lauren and are confident that she has, that she will have a successful future. Please join me in congratulating Lauren Smith as the October Senior of the Month from Bruton High School.
Thank you. So, our next Senior of the Month is from Grafton High School, and Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes, I do. Caroline Condeck, and parent, Mr. John Condeck, please stand. It is with great pleasure that I share with you Grafton Senior of the Month, Caroline Condeck. Caroline has taken full advantage of the unique programs available to students in our district and has actively shaped her educational experience to cater to her passions and future goals. Caroline is an extremely passionate, upbeat, thoughtful, future thinker who has demonstrated a great yearning to acquire new knowledge, especially in the fields of international policy and law. Caroline has a great capacity for love and empathy. She's been an active member of the Special Olympics Club in coaching children with disabilities how to swim in Smart Swim. She is an active volunteer in her church community as well as her school. She thrives in leadership roles such as the eleventh grade class Vice President, Congress Debate Captain, and Spanish Honor Society President. She has a true passion for history and was the founding member and president of the History Honor Society last year. As a Clipper Ambassador, she works with our military students who are new to this area to assist them in finding connections at the school and in the local community. Caroline balances her commitments with academics and has received highest honors each year and has maintained over a 4.0 GPA. Caroline also has a passion for music and has been part of the Grafton Band all four years, where she currently serves as the flute section leader. She also spends her time helping others share her love of music by giving private music lessons. You can also see Caroline giving her time back to the community by participating in the Diocese Youth Conference each year, where she dedicates her time to preparing and packaging food to be sent to Africa. In Caroline's free time, she enjoys hanging out with friends, playing her flute, and is a self-proclaimed movie addict and loves anything related to Disney, with Shrek being her all-time favorite movie. Her favorite memory at Grafton is her spring band trip to Disney. Caroline is a role model for all of our Grafton students, and I can't wait to hear about all the great things she is going to do. We're so proud to honor Caroline tonight as Grafton Senior of the Month. Please join me in congratulating Caroline.
And Dr. George, you have the next Senior of the Month from TAB High School.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce from TAB High School, Paola Amadeo. So, go ahead and correct me up front. How do we pronounce your first name?
Paola.
Close. Paola. Alrighty. Paola Amadeo excels in many areas at TAB High School. She's in the top 10% of her class with straight A's and rigorous course load that has included many AP classes. She's been named a National Merit Commended Student and a Scholar in the College Board National Hispanic Recognition Program. Most impressively, Paola, tell me again.
Paola.
Paola. Thank you. Paola achieved a perfect composite score of 36 on the ACT. Very impressive. Outside of the classroom, Paola is a member of the varsity cross-country team as well as indoor and outdoor track teams. She has played the clarinet in the marching band for four years and is the principal bassoonist in the symphonic band. Paola has contributed numerous service hours at the Mariners Museum as well as at summer camp in the Dominican Republic. She is also active in the youth ministry at her church. In her spare time, Paola enjoys writing science fiction short stories. With her thoughtful respect for others, willingness to lead the way, and leadership by example, Paola has earned the respect and admiration of her peers and her teachers. She is humble and unassuming while demanding the very best from herself in all that she does. When asked, Paola's teachers all respond in a similar fashion, which may be best summed up by one response. "Paola, oh my gosh, she's just wonderful." We are exceptionally proud to present Paola Amadeo as the TAB High School Senior of the Month for October. Congratulations, Paola. You make us very proud.
So, the next Senior of the Month is from York High School, Mr. Medford.
Thank you very much. Can I have Kayden Cox stand? And I believe you have a few family members with you. They all need to stand also. Alright, why don't we bring Kayden right up to the side there so everybody can see him. There we go. York High School is thrilled to recognize Kayden Cox as the October Senior of the Month. Kayden is amazing young and a joy to have in our building. He is a proud Falcon and has an uncontainable amount of school spirit. He gets the students excited at every pep rally with his awesome dance moves and infectious personality. He also wears spirit wear every Friday, just as a proud Falcon should. Kayden is very involved in school activities at York High School. He has been a member of the Drama Club, Thesbian Honor Society Principals Advisory Committee, the Do Something Club, Bowling Club, the Christian Fellowship of Student Athletes. He is also a member of the York High School Football Team and Track and Field Team. You stay busy, young man. Outside of school, Kayden has supported and participated in the Special Olympics. Each year, he raises money through the Polar Plunge, which I won't do, that's cold. This year, he was able to raise over $2,000. Kayden previously lived in Ohio and competed in the state-level Special Olympics. He has won a total of eight gold medals in the 50-meter freestyle and 50-meter backstroke swimming events. He is also a second-degree promesse, black belt in taekwondo, I think I got that right. Kayden currently works at the Newport News International Airport, which I see him quite often, I'm through there, through YCSD Project Experience Program. When he completes school, he wants to open up a restaurant called Kayden's Cheese Burgers. I want to be the first one invited to your restaurant, sir. With Kayden's personality, it is sure to be a hit. Kayden, we are proud to have you as part of our Falcon family. Congratulations on being selected as the October Senior of the Month. You do a great job. Thank you.
Next, we're going to move into our Student Service Awards, and I'm going to give Dr. Shandor a minute to slip down front. So, our first Student Service Award goes to Gwendolyn Moore. If she could come forward with the principal, Tiana Anthony, from Grafton Middle.
Gwendolyn Moore is an eighth-grade student at Grafton Middle School, and we are proud to have her here tonight to receive the Student Service Award for the month of October. Gwendolyn has been volunteering since the third grade, when she helped teachers organize papers and worked in the library at Coventry Elementary School. Now that she's in middle school, she serves the school as the National Junior Honor Society President and has helped bring the ideas to life for the group, including a school-wide bulletin board service project. She's also a member of the pick crew for the Grafton High School Band. There, she loads the trailer for away activities, provides water and snacks, and supports the band during summer band camp. She has been doing this since sixth grade, and she loves to help the team. Outside of school, she volunteers at her church, Waters Edge Church. She works with the four and five-year-olds, playing games and providing snacks before the service begins. Gwendolyn Moore has a servant's heart, and we're excited to see what the future holds for her. Congratulations.
And Dr. George, you have the next Student Service Award?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. This evening, it's my pleasure to introduce Kiara Barkley from TAB Elementary. We are proud to introduce Kiara Barkley, a fifth-grade student at TAB Elementary School. Kiara is a shiny example of student service inside our school and our greater community. Kiara displays maturity and wisdom beyond her years. She has played a pivotal role in our Student Advisory Council, leading us in our volunteer efforts at the Thrive Peninsula, an organization that helps people with financial burdens during their time of need. Her grandparents volunteer at the center every Tuesday, and on Tuesdays that she doesn't have school, she goes along to help. Kiara assists with stocking the food pantry and helping families pick out food to take with them. As a Student Advisory Council member, she read to and entertained our rising kindergarteners at our parent information portion of the Kindergarten Roundup. She then led the families on a tour of the school. During our back-to-school night, she volunteered her time to help sell hearts to raise money for the American Heart Association Peninsula Heart Walk. She also dedicates a lot of her time before school to our jump rope demo team. Kiara's teachers comment that she's a great listener and a student who can be trusted to do the right thing, even when nobody is watching. She is always willing to help others and does so with grace, and is always kind in her words and in her actions. In addition to her school and community service, Kiara is an excellent student. She has received all A's in second grade and scored pass-advanced on all SOL assessments in third and fourth grade. Kiara is also a talented pianist and enjoys playing in her spare time. We look forward to seeing the great things that she will do this year in fifth grade, and we are thankful for Kiara's service to others. Kiara, congratulations.
Now, we have our Community Volunteers of the Month, and Mr. Higginbotham, you have the first.
Yes, if Mrs. Kristen Ball can come forward. And Principal Tiana Anthony. Grafton Middle School is excited to nominate Mrs. Kristen Ball as the York County School Division's Volunteer of the Month for the month of October. Mrs. Ball has been volunteering in her students' classrooms since they were in the first grade. When they became middle school students, Mrs. Ball brought her gifts and helping heart to the middle school. She loves spending time with her students, their friends, the teachers, and the entire Grafton Middle School community. We are so happy that she is with us. During the 2018-2019 school year, she served as the second Vice President of the Grafton Middle School PTSA. This school year, she has moved into the role of President. Through leadership, she organizes the different PTSA committees that support the school, is present at most of the activities that volunteers are asked to attend, and gives her time in many other ways. Mrs. Ball recognizes that finding parent volunteers at the middle school level is more challenging than it is in elementary school, and she steps in and gives her time when others are not available. She also supports the school through the role of Team Mom for the football team. She keeps up with uniforms, organizes team meals, transportation, acts as an advocate for students and families, and cheers on our team. Mrs. Ball is available when you need her the most and looks for opportunities to help. She volunteers at her church, St. Ceteri, and went on a mission trip to Tennessee this past summer. Mrs. Ball is a light to those she touches, and we are proud that she is a Clipper parent. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Kristen Ball.
Thank you. And next, Community Volunteer of the Month, Mr. Medford, you have?
Thank you. I have TAB Elementary School's Volunteer of the Month, Samantha Wilson, if you can come up with Principal Mrs. Mary Lugo. It is a pleasure to recognize Samantha Wilson as TAB Elementary's Volunteer of the Month. Mrs. Wilson is one of the most helpful, energetic, and multitasking people we have at TAB. She is currently serving on our PTA and is Chair of the following committees, just a few: Spirit Ware, Volunteer Coordinator, Membership, TAB Mart, and the Hot Cart. Not sure what that is. She also assists with the Hospitality Committee and any other tasks that needs to be completed. This year, she has increased the number of volunteers for our weekly Hot Cart, which stands for Helping Our Teachers, I just learned. This group meets regularly to prep materials, count out copies, or create instructional activities for our classrooms. In the past, they have met in the conference room to work. With Mrs. Wilson's support, they no longer fit in the conference room, they have spread to the cafeteria to work. One of the many reasons Mrs. Wilson deserves this award is her dedication to our school amid a serious health issue. Last December, she started experiencing symptoms of multiple sclerosis. By February, she was unable to walk and had a medical diagnosis of MS. With treatment and many weeks of rehabilitation in a rehabilitation facility, Mrs. Wilson returned to us in April via wheelchair to help run the spring book fair. She did not miss a beat. She spent most of her time in the rehabilitation center designing and decorating for the book fair. Mrs. Wilson continues to receive treatment and has come, this is hard, has gotten through difficult days, but that has never dimmed her smile or her laughter. In fact, some days, she has to remind herself to slow down and take it easy. In addition to giving us an enormous amount of support at school, she is also a mother with two girls and a proud military spouse. Her husband is unable to be here tonight because he's currently deployed. We thank Mrs. Wilson for unwavering support of our school. We appreciate everything she does for TAB Elementary School to make it a better place. We're just proud to have you in our York County community, and thank you.
Thank you. So, next, Ms. Haywood, you have some presentations on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education to some of our students?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, and as I call your name, if you will come forward, to Logan, who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance, to our two Service Award recipients, Kiara from TAB Elementary and Gwendolyn from Grafton Middle, our four Seniors of the Month, Lauren from Bruton High, Carolyn from Grafton, Paola from TAB High, and Kayden from York High. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented tonight on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with Jeannie Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being presented to each award recipient on behalf of a foundation supporter. And presenting these gifts tonight is Ms. Kelly Ash, a Board Member for the York Foundation for Public Education. Please join me in giving congratulations again to all of these award recipients.
You gotta just accept it.
Gotta get used to it.
And next, we're going to move into some staff recognitions, and Dr. Stephanie Guy, if you would come forward, our Chief Academic Officer, to share some information about the first two awards.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Richardson, members of the Board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize two outstanding YCSD educators. First, I'd like to ask McGruder Elementary School Principal, Mr. Mark Kirk, to come Mr. Kirk was recently recognized by the Fraternal Order of Eagles, Williamsburg Aerie and Auxiliary Number 4548 with an Outstanding Educator Award at their anniversary banquet on September 14th. The group annually recognizes a local educator, firefighter, and police officer at their anniversary outing. Congratulations, Mr. Kirk. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Barbara Westlin, STEM Coach and Resource Teacher at Yorktown Elementary, Math, Science, and Technology Magnet. Ms. Westlin was recently recognized by Governor Northam as the 2019 Outstanding STEM Award recipient. She received the STEM Conductor Award for providing leadership and support to integrate STEM instruction across grade levels and subjects, and inspiring her students to consider STEM careers. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Westlin for this impressive honor.
Great job, thank you. So, next, we're going to have Dr. Jim Carroll, Chief Operations Officer, come forward to share some information about Perfect Attendance Awards.
Thank you, Chairman Richardson, members of the Board. I think we'd all agree that any employee that shows up to work every day at any company or institution is very dedicated. But I would submit to you that it's a special dedication to ride a bus 180 days a year. And to give that some context, there's three runs in the morning, three runs in the afternoon. So, when you multiply those, six runs times 180, that's 1,080 bus rides in one school year. And we have 10 dedicated employees that have done that this past school year. And while these people were recognized at their Transportation Academy, we wanted to give them a special thank you and honor them tonight. So, as I call your name, if you please come up to the front with Dr. Shandor. So, we have four of those employees with us tonight. First one is Pam Beaver. I'd also like to, for the record, name the other six employees. Those were Ralph Crockett, Robert Fisher, Amayatza Gazi, Tina Grubbs, Annabelle Hilliard, and Rika Takahashi. So, thank you again.
And thank you to the bus drivers for all you do every day. Thank you. So, next, we're going to move into the Virginia School Boards Association Academy Awards, and Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Each year, the Virginia School Board Association recognizes Board members across the state for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardsmanship skills through VSPA meetings, conferences, board development and training, and active involvement in the association. There are five levels of awards based on the points earned from July 1 through June 30. The awards being presented tonight are: Award of Achievement and Bronze Pin to Dr. George. We can get him around him a applause. Award of Excellence and Silver Pin to Mr. Richardson and Mrs. Haywood.
And we also have an Award of the Achievement Award, the Bronze Pin to Dr. Shandor. We moved ahead with that pretty quickly, so. So, next, we have our Accent on Academics, and I'll let you share information on our presentation tonight, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Tonight's Accent on Academics project is Bringing Awareness to the Dangers Plastics Pose in Our Marine Life. Students in Ms. Spates' Marine Biology class at Grafton High School developed a project to bring awareness to how plastics to bring awareness to how plastics and plastic straws affect marine life. Their activities included presenting their projects to fourth graders at Grafton Bethel Elementary. To share more about this project and introduce the participants is Ms. Whitney Cataldo, Grafton High School Principal. Ms. Cataldo.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Shandor, Chairman Richardson, and members of the board. We are so pleased to be here tonight and to share this amazing project that our biology students took on, and I'd like to introduce the Clippers that are with us tonight. We have Gina Spate with us, who is our Marine Biology and Science teacher here. So this is Gina. Yes, she is awesome. With us, with our students, I have with me to my left here, Jackson, and he is a Marine Biology student, senior here at Grafton. Also, another senior student, we have Melissa with us right here. And we have a future Clipper, Nora, is with us, and she's currently a Grafton Bethel student. That was part of the project that we did. The subject of this project is very close to all their hearts, and you will be able to not only see, but hear that passion as they share how they did this, why they did this, and why it means so much to them. It was not only a collaborative project for them in the classroom, but we collaborated with future Clippers at Grafton Bethel Elementary. Both students had a chance to creatively think, critically think, and have the impact of what they learned from the project. At this time, I will turn it over to the students, so you can get excited about saving our environment and the power of your actions.
All right, we're going to start with a question. How does this make you feel? This picture, it's sad, isn't it? So approximately 1.4 billion pounds of trash enter the ocean each year. And ocean pollution kills more than a million seabirds and 1,000 marine animals each year. And plastic in the ocean does not only include large floating pieces of plastic, it also includes microscopic pieces of plastic as well.
And did you know that plastic pollution can never be diluted from our ocean waters? And that persistent organic pollutants, POPs, are chemicals that stay in the water and cling to plastic, seizing the breakdown, concentrating in the plastic, and affecting the food chain? Pollution is not only toxic for humans, but also animals, as if we consume these and be poisoned, potentially be poisoned by these chemicals in the plastic. This project was inspired by a current event written by a former student in Ms. Spate's class, Stephen Pettit, and he brought the idea of polluted toys to, polluted toys education to Ms. Spate. And Ms. Spate was able to then share this current event with us, and we began brainstorming how to create a product to share these polluted toys with younger students. His article was so impactful because it was the start to an amazing project that created a fun educational activity for many students to enjoy into the future.
And here's a quote from Stephen. These cute toys are hit at preschools as well as elementary schools and could be a potential field trip for future Marine Biology classes. If enough interest is gained, we could catch a bus to local elementary schools and use the animals to give a presentation about waste. This quote emphasizes the importance of educating students within York County.
And my next question for everyone is, would you vacation here or even swim here? This is how Ms. Spate introduced the plastic pollution in our class. We then watched a documentary titled Plastic Oceans and read an article on POPs. We learned about the Great Pacific Garbage Patch located in the North Pacific Ocean between California and Hawaii, and this sparked interest and passion between all of the students in the class because we wanted to help educate the younger generations about ocean cleanup, and we wanted it to be impactful to everybody.
So at this time, we are going to have you all pick a polluted toy card, and this is how I introduced these toys to my students. They worked in groups of about two to three students and had the opportunity to select an animal just like you are doing right now. If you could hold up your card for us, please. Okay, so Dr. Shandor, it looks like you have Martha the Manta Ray, and I can't see you, is that Pelly the?
Penguin.
Penguin, okay. Dr. George, you have Turf the Turtle, okay, and Willie the Walrus. I have these all. Waldo the Walrus, and is this Darla the Dolphin, and Willie the Whale, and finally, Pelly the Helican. So there's a couple peas in there and very similar. These are, if you could hold up your cards for us, or, okay. And so these are polluted toys, and they're comprised of eight animals and birds handmade by VIDA. This is funded by Sea Shepherd, which is a nonprofit marine organization. Each one is a plush soft toy, and we ask at this time if you could unzip its stomach and take a look inside. What's going to come out for us, right? Anymore? And if you look inside, you can see that the waist inside is plastic waist, and so there's cutlery, bags, cups, bottles, all made out of a fabric textile.
Because our finished product would be given to younger students, it was important that we followed directions carefully, yet we had the flexibility in how we wanted to design our booklet and trading card that you have. We began researching our specific animal and started to think about how we wanted to get our message across to the younger students. Lastly, we needed to consider these booklets had to be age-appropriate, catchy, and fun when we did go to present at Grafton Bethel.
So each polluted toy came with a storybook, and those storybooks were shared with the student. The storybooks explain how each animal got sick and how the children can help them.
For each toy that we had, we had to pick a specific genus and species, as well as a common name, research habitat, research their traits, and create a drawing that the students were then able to color based off the traits or however they wanted to. And each animal required us to write a life motto for them. So each card has each specific part on it, and then the picture in the top right corner. And everyone should have a copy of the card with them attached to their booklet. And our books were made of our own design, and they were made up of activities that we created ourselves using outside generators, such as ones that teachers used to. It was important that we made each activity with focus on clarity and making things easy to understand for the younger students. Each page had to include a graphic of our animal and facts about plastic or something about the animal, so the importance was weighted throughout. And everything is inside your booklet that we created ourselves.
All right, and inside our booklet, we also included a few hand-drawn activities and comic strips along with fun facts on each of the pages. And also, we included a fun project and craft that's related to the environment or related to science in general. And the back of each booklet, we included a resource page with websites that the kids can go on with their parents. They're about either the animal that the booklet is about, or it's about pollution. All right, our trip to Grafton Bethel. Mrs. Hayes was my fourth grade teacher. When I was in her class, she made us do some dioramas about different environments, and my group got the coral reef. So everyone inside my group got to pick an animal, and I chose the sea turtle. And while I was researching the sea turtle, I became really obsessed with sea turtles, and I read every single book Grafton Bethel had on sea turtles. I was that obsessed. So through those books, I learned a lot about the pollutions that was harming the sea turtles and other marine animals. So that kind of started my passion in saving the ocean, and going back to my old fourth grade class and being able to teach younger kids about the dangers of pollution was really, really special. So when we got there, Mrs. Hayes divided the class into small groups, and all the high schoolers, we got to rotate between each group, and we presented the polluted toys to all the kids. So I would start out with an opening question, like, have you ever seen trash at the beach? And I just went from there. The toys were a really good way to explain pollution to the kids because they were at a level that they could understand. Also, we were able to share some of the facts that we learned in class with all the fourth graders as well. Mrs. Spate showed us some videos and documentaries about pollution in the ocean, and we got to share some of those facts. So it was really cool because we were applying what we learned in class to outside, to the outside. And while we were getting ready to leave, some of the kids, they were really excited. They were having competitions with their friends, doing the activities, and making origami. It was really nice.
The high schoolers at Grafton, Grafton High School, they showed us the toys, gave us the trading cards, and let us see the plastic that the real animals eat. I really liked Mark the Shark because the activity and motto book, and the motto was fun in the book. It had fun things like, oh, no, it fell apart. This origami, Mark the Shark, and such. I thought it was sad that we live in a world of trash and that animals that are endangered can go extinct because of pollution. Did you know that sea turtles' shells, some of their shells, can glow under UV light? It's true. If they go extinct, we can't see that anymore, but everyone can help save them, even us kids. I asked some other kids that were there and what they liked and how it made them feel. Aiden Lawson said, "I thought it was very nice that they took their time to come out and teach us about pollution and how it was affecting us and our environment."
Our plans for this year are to visit more schools, to also look at the fifth-grade SOL Oceanography curriculum and incorporate that into our presentation. We'd also like to design a placemat, as you can see on the screen, for the polluted toys continuing the story from last year, and to share these with local restaurants in our community. Our main focus is to reach as many students in the community and educate them on the effects of plastic use and plastic pollution, and to respect our oceans and care about our planet. And Jackson is going to also be reaching out to his fourth grade teacher at Coventry Elementary as well. And at this time, I would like to, thank you all for allowing us, go ahead, you can just go ahead, to speak on this topic that we are so passionate about, and because we are thankful for this opportunity, would like to present each of you with a small token of our appreciation and for recognizing our accent on academics at Grafton High School. Thank you very much.
It was a wonderful presentation, and I'm always excited when I see the older students mentoring or teaching the younger students. It's always a great program to do, but certainly a worthwhile program as well because it saves our environment.
Gina, I'm curious, are any of these kids interested in marine biology as a career? Which one, Jackson?
It was definitely a class I loved last year, and not something I'm looking towards my career, to have a career in, but I loved what Ms. Spate did in her class last year in learning about the plastic oceans and what we can do to conserve our environment and to reduce our plastic use in our world.
That's awesome. Very good.
I would have to agree with Jackson. I really did enjoy the class, and I really do love the ocean, but I don't know about that for a career, sorry, so, yeah.
They're too young to remember Jacques Cousteau.
It was a really awesome presentation. It's interesting to see even local restaurants now stepping away from plastics, even paper straws, and even some states are actually passing laws to eliminate the use of the one-use plastic bags in stores and grocery stores and such. So keep up the hard work and what you're doing because the message is so real, and more people hear it, you know, changes. People, I mean, things change, so you're doing a great job.
You talk about stepping outside of the box. This is such a unique way of presenting a very real concern, and I take my hat off to you. It's fantastic. Enjoy that.
Might get a grant from SeaWorld, you never know.
Never know. Now, if I may ask, is this the type of, that we would find in the ocean? What's the goodies? What's, explain this. I haven't read the card yet.
So I'm an advocate for environmental in my household, and I have always been, so I think it's really important that we find alternatives to using the plastic straws.
So straws, okay.
So when we go to Starbucks or a Wawa, if we have our own personal straw, that's metal and not plastic.
And your brush cleaner.
And your brush to clean it, absolutely.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You helped me with understanding the gift I received.
Let that part out. Metal straws.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
And also, we have extra activity books. If anybody wants some to take to children or grandchildren, we definitely have more of those.
We give one to Logan here?
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You want the card, so, right. How are you?
So the board's going to take a short recess so we can come down and meet some of the awards recipients for tonight, and you'd like to get some photographs as well, so we're doing a short recess. We convene, and first, we have unfinished business. We have none. Is there anything? All right, we're going to move into our capital projects report. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm going to call Mr. Mark Shearhart, Associate Director for Capital Plans, with, tonight to present this month's capital project report. Shearhart.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, here's your capital projects report for the month of October. The first project I'd like to touch on is Grafton Middle School and High School, and this is the, we started out last summer with the heating and air conditioning replacement and the lights, and the contractors continuing to work on some punch list items in the building. They have poured the concrete slab for the new generators out back, and they are scheduling to set the generators behind the middle school on November 5th. Here's a picture of the contractors pouring that slab behind the building. The next project I'd like to touch on is Coventry Elementary School, and this is the metal roof replacement there. They have installed, they have completed installation of all the metal roof panels on that building, and they are finishing up metal trim work, gutters, and downspouts there. This is what the roof looks like at Coventry Elementary. It really brightened up that, freshened up that school, looks a lot newer now. The elementary school, this is a breezeway enclosure here. The contractors continue pouring foundations and sections of the concrete floor. They've also continued laying some of the concrete block. There are still some delays there. There's some underground electrical wiring that's there that has to be rerouted around the building, and we're working with Dominion Electric to get that wiring removed, relocated. And here's a picture of the front of that. You can see the block wall up there. They haven't got the brick put on front of it yet, and then that's from the front, and then from the back here, you can see the opening here. You can see some of the storage rooms and other areas on the left-hand side there, and then the hallway is in this, right there where the scaffolding is at. The next project is Mount Vernon Elementary School, and this is much farther ahead, and Dare and the Dare delays are because of the underground electrical wiring. So at Mount Vernon, they have roof membrane and drains installed, they have the heating and air conditioning units installed, and they're also putting up the grid work and the lights. You can see them here. They've painted the walls, door frames. So this is the main hallway here. On the left-hand side, you can see where the blue door frames are. There's some storage rooms there, and there's a conference room there. And on the right-hand side, you see the wooden, piece of wood there, that's the new library, a new, excuse me, a new computer lab doorway, and then down the hallway a little ways is a new entrance to the library. And this is what the roof looks like there. You can see the brand-new roof and also the new heating and air conditioning units for that space. Then the next project is TAB Middle School. This project is completed. It was completed August 9th, a few days ahead of the scheduled completion date, and this is what that roof looks like. So Coventry and TAB Middle School look like a brand-new, fresh building now with their brand-new roofs. The last project I'll touch on this evening is York High School Learning Commons, and the contractors have been busy there. Carpet, windows, doors are all installed. We have occupancy on the space now, and the contractors are still working on a very short punch list and wrapping that all up. They had a final inspection this morning. They are receiving furniture in multiple shipments. It's from different dealers, and it is coming to the school. So they, as they receive those shipments, they're installing that furniture, but we're waiting on a few key items yet, key furniture items. But this is what it looks like now from the first floor. But this is what it looks like now from the first floor, so it looks very fresh and very open. And then here's another picture of it from the second floor, looking down into the space. It's a very beautiful space. I think the students are going to love it. So, that's my last picture for this evening and do you have any questions for me?
I just have one there. They're utilizing the gymnasium still? How do they get in and out?
Yes, there's a temporary sidewalk across the front of that gymnasium and they're coming in a back door. They have card access in that back door and that's the way they're getting to and from the gymnasium now.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, no other questions? Thank you very much for that presentation. Appreciate all the update.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Shandor.
And next, we're going to move into comments from citizens, so public participation at board meetings. Anyone that signed up to speak, which I have the list here. We provide public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board and we expect our speakers to be courteous and modeling for our students. And each speaker is, they may speak up to three minutes. A timer is visible to the speakers at the podium and the speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on and the timer will begin after you state your name and address, please. So, the first speaker that's signed up this evening is Darren Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the board. My name's Darren Williams. I live at 158 Barnswallow Ridge, Yorktown, Virginia. Here tonight to talk about a problem I just recently found out about at Grafton High School and by recently, I mean today. There were some rumors over the weekends that two classes, two math classes at Grafton High School would be dissolved and the students in those two classes, their schedules could potentially, would have to be totally rearranged. Obviously, this is pretty concerning to myself and other parents. First of all, I'm really concerned that I heard about it through the grapevine, so to speak, and then, you know, we had to go on our own to the counselor at the school today to have confirmation of this. So, one class has been told, our class hasn't been told. We think there'd be more kids' parents here if they had been told. Secondly, you know, we're already a quarter away through the year. I know, you know, typically when kids get into school, first couple of weeks of school, you're identifying how to learn from the teacher, what the teacher expects, and that can take a week or two to do. So, you know, here we are, a quarter into the school year. My daughter Kylie's potentially about to start a whole different class schedule with the different teachers and, you know, to me, I see her getting a week to two behind, having to learn how to work with this different teacher. You know, they're fantastic teachers and I love the administration at Grafton High School, but obviously, this is very concerning. As a citizen and a taxpayer of York County, it saddens me that something like this is happening in our schools, you know? That's what we pride ourselves on in York County is having some of the best schools in the state, you know? And this is why our houses are so expensive, but it's worth it because we have great schools. So, when something like this happens to where my daughter, after the first quarter of the year, is potentially having her whole schedule reorganized because we couldn't fill a position that's been open since summertime, you know, that's really concerning. And I understand there's nationally, there's a shortage of teachers, but you know, gosh, in York County, again, that saddens me that we're at that state. Obviously, I would like there to be no schedule change, you know? Maybe that's not reality. With that said, at least, you know, I implore the board and the administration to try to make this as low impact as possible on the kids. You know, some kids are going to react better than other kids are going to this. So, thank you for your time and I'd really appreciate your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Our next speaker is Connor Massignan. Am I saying that correctly? I'll let you repeat it when you get up here, when you say your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Connor Massian. I live at 100 Pollock Court, Yorktown, Virginia. I'm a student in one of these classes that is being dissolved. My 2A B calculus class, which I would have every day, is being turned in, well, my teacher is a, what's the word? My teacher is going to then proctor an online AFDA class, which is an algebra class for lower students. But my main concern by this is that my schedule, the only other calculus class offered at my school is during a time where I take an AP class that is only offered in one block. And this is troubling to me because I have no idea what my schedule will look like after this change because this has been confirmed to me through my teacher, through my assistant principal and through my counselors and no one has a solution for me. I'm taking AP chemistry class that is only offered at this block and I need to take a math class to, because otherwise, I won't even be like looked at by colleges. And I chose to take this chemistry class as an elective class to look good on college applications and if I'm forced to drop that, I'm very concerned on how that would look for me because we are a quarter into this, in quarter, we are a quarter into the school year and it's just, it's troubling because I have no idea what will happen to me after this. and I know that there are other students in my class that have a similar problem, may not be with the same 3A class, but with others. And I have no idea how to fix it and I also understand that there's the shortage of teachers, but I just, I'm hoping to find a solution through this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for speaking, Connor. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
And next speaker we have is Erin Massian.
Hello, I'm Erin Massian, Connor's mom. I live at 100 Pollock Court and I'm here about the same math class issue. Like he said, he's in the math class 2A B and on Friday after, well, when the class was almost over, the administrator came in and said that the class was going to be dissolved. He was very upset and very concerned about it and I understand that math is, it's a hard class for a lot of kids and that there are, there are many classes that don't have a teacher and I understand that, but I feel like there has to be a better way to fix the problem. And I know that the teachers at Grafton did come up with some solutions and I don't feel like it was handled as the best way it could have been by administration and they could have done a better job listening to the teachers and their solutions to this problem because it is affecting many children and I just hope that we can look at better answers and find things to help the kids and maybe something can be done on a, you know, local level to help draw in more teachers and just do something to make people want to come and teach here and it's probably, you know, big changes like this affect the teachers also and finding out that things like this happen probably, or could affect how people want to come and work here. So, I just wanted you to be aware of the problem and I hope we can all work together and find a solution. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nathan Brauner.
Good evening. My name's Nate Brauner. I live at 304 Blue Heron Drive here in Yorktown and I have an extensive professional background in design and planning along with process improvement. I'm concerned about the lack of transparency right now in the York County School Division and the lack of effective protocols for including stakeholders in the planning and decision-making processes. Last February, I responded to an email asking for parents to participate in a parent forum to provide feedback to proposed changes to student assessments and high school credit courses. The presenter laid out the existing procedures and also presented a new methodology under consideration. They then laid out five pieces of butcher paper in five different categories for us to write our comments. They never laid out the objectives of what they were trying to accomplish, nor were the five subject areas tied in a logical pattern to an assessment of the subject at hand. When questioned about what the objectives of the effort was and their methodology for assessing the two alternative courses of action, the lead administrator stumbled and was unable to answer the question. She did remark that three years earlier, when they had begun the review, they had received a similar comment from a parent but had decided not to act on it. It begs the question, if you haven't defined your objectives, how can you possibly determine if one option is more appropriate than the other? Imagine my surprise when I later discovered that prior to our meeting, at a meeting of the Virginia Department of Education in Richmond, representatives of the YCSD had presented the change in assessment as a decision that had already been made. If the decision had already been made, then why were they asking for our feedback? And what possible use could they have for the ineffective feedback which they were soliciting other than checking a box? I'm sure that they reported to you, the board, that they had sought feedback, but did they listen to the feedback? And was your process effective? I would argue that it was not and it's hard to have confidence in the conclusion when the process is fundamentally flawed. I bring this up now because I'm afraid that I'm seeing a similar situation unfolding now with regards to the delivery of gifted education in the county. In the few weeks I have been researching what's occurring, I've noticed that the division's holding meetings where they're excluding key stakeholders in the discussions, conducting unfocused committees without clearly defining objectives and conducting meetings in a closed manner that's inconsistent with Virginia statutes and law. By adopting this approach, the administrators are needlessly inflaming the parents involved, handicapping the process and opening the division to potentially damaging litigation. Even if you take legal issues out of the equation, why would a public body deliberately exclude key stakeholders and conduct less than an open and transparent approach to developing policy? It doesn't serve the public interest and it is certain to generate mistrust in the community. I urge the members of the board to direct the superintendent to involve all stakeholders early in the design and planning process
Thank you very much.
And to begin conducting all advisory committee meetings
Your time is finished.
With openness in accordance with Virginia statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Brauner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, our next speaker is Teresa Haas.
Good evening, Dr. Shandor, Chairman Richardson and the members of the board. I also am here to speak regarding the dissolution of the calculus and other math classes at Grafton High School. As a parent, you spend time, I spend time each year, I know a lot of parents spend time each year, meeting with the guidance office, helping your child plan their academic, you know, coursework and whatnot and you have a path for them, especially a student who you hope that will be going to college. So, you plan that academic path so that they can take classes that grow upon each other, so they're taking the highest rigor type classes to get into the best schools for education. You know how difficult it is to get into good colleges these days. Well, last Friday evening, we were notified, we are actually notified, the other class was not, that the calculus class in 2A B would be dissolved due to an inability to hire a licensed math teacher candidate for another class. We were told that this would begin next week or right after the end of the first quarter, so beginning right after Veterans Day, and all students would be moved to either the calculus 3A class, which is very concerning to me because calculus A, calculus 3A class already has more than, more than capacity students in it. So, it would put the class size over 30 students in that class, which I think is too many to be teaching a high-level math class. We were offered to meet with guidance to determine the least impactful schedule changes to ensure the continuity of instruction for students, but as the gentleman spoke earlier, we are a quarter of the way into the school year. Revising children, teenagers' schedules to take all different classes with all different teachers and all different students will be detrimental to these students' grades. We have, I have spoken to administration today. I spoke to the assistant principal and I was offered some options, but they are not optimal for every student. I was offered for my child to take AP calculus AB. My child's not ready for AP calculus AB and certainly not ready to take it a quarter of the way into the semester, into the year. He was also offered to take the lower-level math class. That's not going to help him either. He needs to take calculus. He was also offered to take the class where there's more than 30 kids in the class. That concerns me because I don't think they're going to get the best effort of learning and teaching. I feel bad for that teacher to have to teach more than 30 students. I just asked the school board, Assist Grafton, to look into a better solution than has been offered to the families that are affected by this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. That concludes our speakers for tonight, so the public hearing is closed. And Dr. Shandor, would you like to share a few comments on?
Yeah, so I'll just, a couple of just brief comments. Number one, Ms. Siders is here this evening, who is our Director of Secondary Education and she'll be happy to talk to some of the parents that spoke this evening. And I'll ask Dr. Guy will investigate some other potential options that are out there.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, next, we're going to move into matters by board members and I'm going to start first, I think in lieu of the tragedy that's happened at TAB High School, I'd just like everyone to keep the families of those affected in their thoughts and prayers, so. We're going to start with Mr. Higginbotham.
Yeah, I'll keep my remarks short. Mr. Rogers said, and I'm paraphrasing here, but in the wake of, you know, a tragic event, he said to look for the helpers. And between the community members, first responders, you know, parents, family, thing like that, we've seen some tremendous helpers in the last, you know, 48 hours and it's just so wonderful to see the community lift each other up and support each other and love each other and I'm just going to continue to, you know, just pray and to send my thoughts to all of the community that's involved and even outside the community. We had an outside school division come in and provide lunch for TAB High School teachers and staff today. So, everybody's hurting, but we're all lifting each other, so thank you to all those people who have been helping to let the community heal.
Thank you. Mr. Medford?
Brett Wells said, just hug your family and keep them close.
Thank you. Ms. Haywood?
In agreement, loving prayers to the family, the community, the student body. Not only us, but also a Bethel High School student lost her life two nights ago, so this whole region is reeling from sadness. So, again, in time, but again, prayers and thoughts to the family.
Thank you. Dr. George?
Yeah, I don't have much to add to that, just, you know, the outpouring and the folks that showed up last night, the 2,000 some odd people, it was nothing short of uplifting, inspiring, just beautiful. It really was. And we have a tremendous community here, not just in TAB, but all throughout York County. And so, never take that for granted. Please continue to pray for the families.
Thank you. We're going to continue our meeting with our financial matters and Ms. Haywood, would you please share information and discuss our financial matters?
I do have financial matters this evening. So, for the month of September, there was a total amount of claims for $11,672,185.15. With respect to consideration of approval of claims certified for payment, we have claims certified for payment for the month again of September. Significant expenditures include instructional-related expenditures totaled $1.8 million and included payments to New Horizon for $1.68 million for tuition for the governor's school, special education and career and tech ed programs. Payment to Five Ponds Press for $133,000 for history and science textbooks. Payments for technology-related items totaled approximately $326,000 and included payments to Tyler Technologies for hardware and support of our transportation and inventory systems. Payment to SLAT Consulting for $47,400 for wireless support, for wireless network support. Payment to Blackboard for $37,200 for our mass communication system. E-plus technology for $35,600 for VMware support. Payment to Mid-Atlantic for $32,300 for upgrades to our school-based security system. And also to Cox Communication in the amount of $24,100 for Ethernet and Internet services. Payments relayed to administration totaled $130,000 and included payments to CHKD for $63,000 for middle and high school athletic trainers, to VACOR for $24,300 for workers' compensation, to Mullin Publications for $15,600 for printing the student handbook, AON for $11,300 for actuarial and financial supporting services. We paid to Heartland Construction for the Grafton Complex HVAC and office reorganization and also to the York High Learning Commons renovation. and also to the York High Learning Commons renovation. And there were four amounts there that totaled a little over $3,347,000. We had significant payments to, related to food service, that totaled $51,600, and included payments to Sodexo for $39,700 for food service operations, to Tyson Foods for $11,900 for USDA food processing. Payments related to operations and maintenance totaled $67,500, and included payments to Dominion Energy for $57,400 for utility services, and Republic Services for $10,000 for waste disposal. As we move on, under consideration of approval for financial reports for September, there's significant charges relating to the operating budget. For September, the state revenue for September is up from, is up more than $820,000 when compared to September of 2018. The increase is due to approved state financing, approved, to approved state funding increases for FY '20 and increases in student enrollment. The federal revenue for September 2019 is down by more than $862,000 from September of 2018. This is due to the fact that the federal impact aid revenue is not received on any regular or scheduled basis. With respect to expenditures, instructional expenditures are approximately $168 million, higher in September of 2019 than in 2018. This is due to the increase in instructional and support staff required for growth and the staff compensation increase for FY '20. Significant changes related to the food service budget. For revenue and expenditures, first, there is a difference in food service revenue from September 2019 to 2018 of approximately $106,000. This is a result of a delay in posting September 2018 revenue in October of 2018. And secondly, food service expenditures are approximately $35,000 higher in September of 2019 than in 2018. This is due to the increase in student enrollment and participation, which is a good thing. And lastly, consideration of approval of resolution 19-57, a resolution authorizing a specific procurement. Again, resolution 19-57 requires that the board's approval authorizing procurements are more than $50,000, and there's one item, which is Microsoft Premier Service of $70,000. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the financial reports for September 2019 and to approve resolution 1957.
Thank you. Ms. Haywood, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Ms. Ford.
Yes, a motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Dr. George to approve financial matters as listed. Board members, you may vote, please. The motion has passed five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. We're going to move into our consent calendar, and I'll briefly read those. It's the approval of personnel actions, the approval of donations in the amount of $23,453.52, the approval of the 2019-2020 Gifted Education Advisory Committee, the approval of minutes for the special meeting and a regular meeting on September 23, 2019, and the approval of overnight field trips and student activities for the period of November 1, 2019 through October 31, 2020, which we typically do every year as well. So is there a motion to, and a second to approve the consent calendar as listed?
I move to approve.
A second.
All right, Ms. Ford, you call the board.
Yes, I'm going to open the online voting. It's not showing up, so we'll go ahead and take a verbal vote as well.
It's showing up.
Just popped up.
It's not on the screen. It's not up on our screen for the viewers. A motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve the consent calendar as listed. Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would just like to point out that in our donations of $23,000, there was an article in the paper recently where an individual came in and paid off the lunch accounts for students at Bethel Manor for $1,949.79. But out of that donations, there was also an individual who anonymously donated $3,221 to pay off student lunch accounts at Coventry. And then also, the Exchange Club of York was dissolving, and they presented the school board with $10,000, and they wanted half of that money to go to pay off student lunch accounts that were in the negatives. So I just wanted to point that out, so, for people that didn't go online and read it and they're watching tonight, so. Next action item is proclamation for the American Education Week, November 18 through 22 of 2019. Dr. Shandor, would you share comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. The annual observance of American Education Week dates back to 1921. It was established for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and need of the public schools, and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. American Education Week is a reminder that all children deserve a high-quality education, and that each and every employee of the school division, be they teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, or office staff, they all play an integral role in supporting and equipping students every day.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation for American Education Week?
I move to approve.
Second. Ms. Ford.
A motion was made by Dr. George and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the proclamation for American Education Week. Looks like it's up now, so you can cast your vote.
It's not coming up.
Okay, Mrs. Haywood?
It came up, yes.
Okay. And Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
So the vote passed five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Mr. Chair, if I can ask, with respect to the donations, and we saw in the paper, the one donation for the food service, and then the others that you highlighted tonight, is it possible to ask Dr. Shandor, and this is nothing now, just as we look, where does that leave us with the accounting across the school division of monies owed with these donations being applied to that? Where does the school division stand?
We can pull that information and share that with the board.
Yeah, it'd be great to know. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. All right, now, we're going to move into our policy discussion, quadrennial review of Section H, negotiations, York County School Board Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor, would you share?
Thank you. Someone else, Dr. Carol Phil, please come to the podium and share information regarding this policy.
Thank you. A board before you is your quadrennial review of Section H. Section H deals with negotiations. It's a very short section. It's got one policy in it, and that's Section HA, which is negotiations legal status. Now, state code and law does not allow for collective bargaining in this state, therefore, we do have one policy that prohibits that. We did change the wording on the policy, and that was at the suggestion of the Assistant County Attorney, because she wanted to have language that better paralleled the legal case that cited Commonwealth versus County Board. Open any questions, or I'm sure Mrs. Berry would be able to answer anything.
Okay, no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carol. Appreciate that information. So for policy readings, first reading and second reading, we have none. So now, we're going to move into the report of the superintendent. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm going to keep it brief this evening. I've had the opportunity to be in a number of schools, obviously, for the first, that wasn't me, for the last few months of the school year, getting into classrooms, visiting professional learning communities, meeting with our staff. It's always a joy to be in the schools, to observe instruction, and to connect with students, and ask them, and talk to them about their learning. We had our Custodial Academy earlier, so we got to celebrate the work of all of our custodians. Dr. Vladu provided some training for them as well. They've done a remarkable job. As you know, we did 14 projects this summer, and many of them worked extremely hard over the summer to make sure that our schools are ready. We also had PTA Meet the Administrators Night a few weeks ago, where we had probably a record number of parents attend that event. We've never had the room so full at a PTA event, which was wonderful. I think there were over 30 some parents there, and that's the opportunity to meet the administrators who work at the school board office in a variety of different roles. Many of the people who were still in the room got to present to those parents. Also, I'll briefly share about the federal impact aid survey cards. Obviously, this is extremely important. Mr. Bowen met with the PTA and gave a plug for those federal impact aid cards as well, and we explained to the parents that is not a York County initiative, that is directly from the federal government. So we certainly want all of our parents to take a few minutes and complete those cards. And I'll end with how I started. You know, my heart certainly goes out to those three families and all of the TAB community who are dealing with such a tragic loss. Again, we had wonderful examples of our community coming together Sunday evening and today, all day in our schools. We've had numerous businesses and other school systems and churches, et cetera, reach out to support our kids and our staff members, and we certainly thank them for all of their support as we're going through this time. We're really fortunate here to have really strong leadership in our schools who will make sure that all of our kids have the support and resources they need. That concludes the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So we'll be back for our next work session, November 11 at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, everyone, and have a nice meeting. This meeting is adjourned.